I'll follow the script then because the script says let's do member welcome and swearing in on item three. Call order first, alright. Okay, the meeting of the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019 is now in session. I'd like to go ahead and stand for the pledge allegiance and then we'll go ahead and proceed from there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Yeah, let's go ahead and administer the oath before we move on to the roll call so that everybody is a member of the board before we do actually do the roll call.
Howard Tonkin, Michael McDermid, and Charles Ernst, please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will protect and defend the Constitution.
That I will protect and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Florida.
And the Constitution of the State of Florida.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner.
For the city of North Miami.
For the city of North Miami.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please sign your oaths.
Please sign your oaths and pass them to the secretary, please.
Congratulations and welcome, Howard.
Thanks, welcome.
I was trying to catch up with you before, but.
I was in Orlando this morning.
So, just for the record, the members that are currently present, Commissioner Bob Pashon and Commissioner Melton Goodwin did not need to be sworn in.
Right, they are, they are current with their terms. There were three, three spots open, I believe, that needed to be filled at the last commission meetings. In my understanding that there are still some openings that will need to be filled. Two more, three, three more positions that will need to be filled. Hopefully that'll be done before the next time that we, we do meet and we'll get that all taken care of.
Who are the appointors for the remaining three?
The, one is the, would have to be the mayor, and I could not recall Mr. Echez's. I, I could not recall that.
Don't mind.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on. Now that we are sworn in, Marlene, if you could go ahead and make the roll call to board members, please.
Commissioner Howard Tonkin.
Here.
Commissioner Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Michael McDermid.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Pashon.
Present.
Commissioner Jason James.
He, I guess has an excuse his absence last minute. I, I believe he was, he had said he was coming, correct?
Yeah.
And I believe he had to cancel at the last minute, so.
Commissioner Melton Goodwin.
Present.
We have coram.
Thank you very much.
He's gonna be reappointed as well, right? Jason.
Yes, he was. He is current. Alright, so that is an excused absence.
Mr., Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
In response to Commissioner Pashon's question, the, Mr. Echez's appointment, appointor is de solemni.
Alright, thank you, Debbie. Alright, are there any amendments to the agenda? Staff, none?
None from staff, sir.
Alright, thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Move to adopt the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pashon, moved by Mr. Melton. All those favors, say aye. Aye. Communications, I just want to go ahead and welcome Mr. Howard Tompkins to our.
Thank you.
Our Fine Planning Commission. Mr. Tompkins, if you'd like, just give us a little bit of brief background. I know you've been an active member of this community for some time and we welcome you aboard.
Thank you. So, my background in the city would be that I've lived in this area for almost twenty years. I bought my home on Griffin Boulevard in 2010 and became active in our city shortly after that. And have been involved in various homeowners associations and as a business person and resident, have also been involved in various aspects of the city. And as a business owner, my business Urban Habitat is integrally involved in the future sustainability of our South Florida region, both with regard to endangered species of animals and the human habitability of the region.
Thank you, and we certainly welcome your expertise in that area. That's a big concern of ours and we look forward to whatever you can contribute to the decision-making processes. We have developments come before us or those problems come up and we need to address them. And we're certainly going to need a person like you to help us through those, those areas. Okay, let's go ahead and move into the public hearing portion of the meeting. First item tonight is PC 9-19, An Ordnance of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, Providing for Text Amendments to Chapter 29 of the City Nor, of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Entitled Land Development Regulations by Amending Article 4, Zoning Districts and the Official Zoning Map, To Establish the Special Development and Transit-Oriented Development Overlay District, Clarifying the Bonus Density Allocation Provisions, Providing for Repeal Conflict Severability, Correction of Scrivener's Errors, and for an effective date. May we have staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and commission members. For the record, Debbie Love, City Planner with the Community Planning and Development Department. The item before you is, was tabled from your previous meeting, as you all maybe remember. And we brought it back now. You should have received from, at your request, we did forward you the table that we had been working on. And we still are of the recommendation from staff that all of the tables are deleted. And that's the reason that you have this before you. So, let's go ahead and walk through this brief presentation for the benefit of our newest member. And for the audience, of course. Let's see, doing it the right way? Yes, alright. So, this is both an, a text amendment to the LDRs as well as a zoning map amendment. We need to, as we discussed at our last meeting, it's critical to get this piece passed. Whether you all want to make recommendation to keep the table or not, because there is a timeline, a deadline, related to the comprehensive plan. So, we have to have it adopted by City Council before the end of September. So, the way that we have it scheduled currently, that will occur. So, in, in this regard, it is implementing, you all adopted, City Council adopted it by Septem, in September 12th of 2018. And technically, we have a year to adopt it. So, by the time this appears and gets adopted on the September 10th, City Council agenda. This does establish a new Section 4309 for this Special Development and Transit-Oriented Development Overlay. A little bit of history that we had talked about before, I just want to back up for our newest member, is this area is part of what is called a regional, the Regional Activity Center. This incorp, this area also includes the Solomia property, FIU. It's a very large regional activity center, which was established quite a few years ago. And part of that establishment was determining the maximum number of dwelling units that could occur in that area. So, with that, the application that we sent to the state that was approved to establish the RAC, which is the shorthand for Regional Activity Center, was about 7,000 dwelling units. And so, at the time, so when Solomia became, it was Biscayne Landing, and when it becomes, they, it's under a conditional use. And they are, have been allocated in that, a total, right now, of 4,600 dwelling units or thereabouts. But overall, it would be 5,000 that would go to them. And we, the remaining 2,000 is now allocated to this special transit development overlay district only. So, it's only applicable, these new dwelling units are only applicable there. So, in these uses, we've established that, right now, the vast majority of that hash-marked area in there, which is really where that, that overlay district is, it's primarily, as you can see, it's primarily industrial, which has absolutely no underlying residential uses at all. And it does allow just straight industrial, except for that very large R6 brown spot there. That's the Alero Apartments. It's also under a conditional use permit. And that conditional use permit was from the seventies. So, in this area, the R6 area would be, already has some underlying density. And if they want to add more density to it, they would have to modify their conditional use permit. But in the M1, there's no residential density at all. So, they would have to ask you for every single bonus unit that they need of that 2,000. In the R6, if they want to do a mixed-use project, they would have to come before you to request a commercial floor area, the non-residential square footage that we have. So, which is applicable throughout the city, that's available throughout the city. So, it also, with this overlay, now it allows a wider variety of uses that on both the R6 properties as well as the M1 properties. It allows commercial and R6, and it allows residential and other commercial activities in the M1 areas. The height is 200 feet inclusive of the parking levels. The density is 150 dwelling units per acre. Now, that matches the comprehensive plan because those two items are governed by the comprehensive plan.
How big is the R6 plot?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number. But we can find that out for you, sir. The maximum lot size, the minimum lot size there in that area has to be 12,000 square feet. So, if you've got, the idea is to encourage assemblage of parcels of land. The dwelling unit size we're recommending is 500 square feet. And the lot coverage has expanded to 90 percent. The reason for that, and the reason for this higher density in this very targeted area, is because we are trying to find the right spots in the city that are targeted. And we stay away from the res, the low-density residential and encourage developments in certain targeted areas of the city. And so, that's the reason for the 90 percent lot coverage. But they still have to do their buffers, they still have to do their landscaping. And so, if they can fit all that stuff on there and do all their stuff, they can do, they can actually increase their lot coverage. But they still have to do all the other things the code requires, including, like I said, landscaping. And so, what this also does is, is it deletes all the bonus charts that are currently in there, many of which we've had some very great conversations over the last year about the fact that many items on the existing bonus density charts are already required by code. So, we're now giving them bonus units for something that the code already requires. So, it, it needs to be updated and we just thought it is just better to delete them and proceed forward with it without that. And so, the next steps is we now have this scheduled. So, if, assuming you all pass this tonight or recommend approval tonight, it wa, it's scheduled for first reading before City Council on 8/27, and then the second and final reading is September 10th. So, within ten days after that adoption date, the ordinance will become effective. We do have a lot of folks who are very anxious to get this moving ahead. And so, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. However, that is the end of staff's presentation.
Debbie, if I may, follow up to Mr. Pashon. The, the size of the acreage is something I had a discussion with you yesterday. One developer could in fact plan a development within that one whole section, R6, is that correct? If he, if he wanted to, or he had a massive project he wanted to put in there, he, he could in effect do that.
He could.
That's using up all the bonus points.
Depending upon the acreage, but they have, right now, the first thing they would have to do is to come back before City Council to remove that old restrictive covenant. Because it's, it's one of, a very strict restrictive covenant, right down to the building locations. They have part, a lot of surface parking lot there and they can't even touch, they can't even make the surface parking lot go away without, under the restrictive covenant. And it tells them, you know, you are going to maintain this great, wonderful piece of asphalt, you know, forever, unless you get the restrictive covenant. So, then it would be based upon the, the total acreage. And that would be 150 dwelling units per acre, that entire area. Let me see what that is. I had that in there at one point. Bear with me just a moment, gentlemen. Maybe it was in my other, okay. I actually had the RAC size in here, I mean, the Special Development Overlay District size in there. So, my apologies for not being able to pick it up right off of the top of my head. And to back up one quick second, this area was supposed to have been designated right shortly after the RAC was created. That was one of the requirements. So, many, many years later, we are now doing that. So, my apologies for not having that number off the top of my head. Any other questions before staff mentions?
Well, what we could do is, I can go ahead and open up the, the meeting to the public. And we can move on after that part of the meeting. And then we'll go, we'll get some more questions from the.
Well, the staff would like to mention two quick things that, as we were updating this section, we realized there's a couple of Scrivener's errors in the sections which is now labeled 1. It would be Section 4-305D1. There is a, on the third line in, it says, it starts with standards. It should say standards are in addition to. So, staff would, will be making that change to correct, to add addition. And then, and on Section 4-305D2, again, on the third line, it begins with conforms. It should say conforms in all. So, we would add the word all after, at the third, right after the end.
Debbie, get by the mic. I've got a little bit of a head cold, can you speak into the mic a little bit? Cause I'm trying to follow you.
Certainly, sir. Section 4-305D1, the new one. On the third line that starts with standards, it said standards are in. We need to add the word addition, so that it would read standards are in addition to all other applicable development standards.
And that is all within the NRO?
This is all just language that in addition to, it's just a Scrivener's error for a missing word.
Okay.
Alright. The same thing, there's a missing word in number two, the new number two, again on the third line.
But that.
Yes, sir.
But that, that, that falls under 4305, which says neighborhood overlay, NRO district.
It's just a missing word, sir. Doesn't add or take away from, from it. It's just a Scrivener's error, a missing, flat-out missing word. And again, on number two, line three, that begins with conforms, there's another missing word there. It should say conforms in all other respects. So, that, so that would, we, staff would be making those changes. And we just wanted to let you know that.
Alright, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter before the commission is welcome to step up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Marisol Medina.
We'll give you three minutes, since we don't have a big crowd tonight.
Gracious, thank you.
We'll keep you at three minutes.
I just wanted to answer his question. Marisol Medina, 1270 Northeast 124th. You asked about that property, and it's, it, does that go based on living, actual size, living area, or adjusted area? Or lot size, which one did you want to know? Pashon? You asked how big that property was.
The, 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 the residential element.
Yeah, so is that that lot size then?
The whole R6.
Well, it says lot size, actual living, and so, lot size then.
Well, actually, no, I think the whole area.
It's one development.
Of the R6.
It's one development.
You're saying the same thing.
Okay, cool, so 6,460, oh, sorry, 646,468 square feet. It's pretty big.
600,000?
Sixty, 646,000.
The R6 piece is 600,000?
Square feet?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Okay, so.
No, but that's it. Um, they also got some.
Yeah, I.
15 acres or something?
Yeah, I don't have a calculator to figure out acreage, but.
That's a lot.
That's, that's a lot of acres.
Yeah. They got a conditional use.
46,000 plus.
Permit or something, not too long ago, they were on the agenda and they got increased height, just to keep you updated as to what's happened there.
Different property.
Different property, that was 1840? Ah, okay, then forgive me, I just wanted to be able to answer the questions quickly.
It's okay.
But no, it looks good. Um, the transit overlay is probably best suited there versus in the middle of the city. Although I would have loved to walk to the train station, that would have been very awesome. It's probably better suited in a less traffic area. And they're improving North Miami Beach's side of the road anyway. And, but I think in last conversations, some people spoke of if you put residential inside of one of your heavy industrial zones, that's like the, kind of the unwanted zones for all of our polluted areas are going to go there. And then you're going to put housing right next to it. That might pose problems in the future, although there is housing there now. I hope that the new rules that we've put, that we just passed in our last council meeting, that, that they use 100 percent Florida native plants. And also, they're responsible for a way better way of developing things with four elements out of seven being required as a rain and water harvesting, the mitigation, and a couple of other things. But I wanted to answer your question, sadly, it's a different property, but it's a pretty big chunk of land. They have five, seven, seven buildings currently. And they're very tall. Have fun.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this matter, please step forward. And I do see a gentleman coming before us. Good evening, sir, please state your name and address for, for the record.
Ethan Wasserman, Greenberg Torg, 333 Southeast Second Avenue. I, I thought I would hide in the crowd tonight, but.
Welcome, sir.
I, we, here on behalf of a, a property owner on the northeast corner of 151st Street, we support this item. We're anxious to, you know, have the regulations in place so we know how to site design our project and, and come in before you all for an application. The only comment I would have is that, you know, I'd love to see more flexibility for staff as appropriate. You know, I think the four out of seven requirements on environmental aspects of the project is important. But to the extent there's other things that can be done, we're limiting to just those specific seven. Same thing with the plant materials. If, if there's a unique scenario, and I don't, I don't have a, a situation in mind where maybe there's a reason, maybe there's a design, maybe there's a plant that's not Florida native and we want to have it, you can't under this draft. But maybe there's a way to give staff some flexibility as appropriate. And of course, all these applications come before you anyways. But I'm, we're, we're supportive of the draft as it is, that would be my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. We'll go ahead and open the, I asked two questions from the planning commissioners. Bob, I'm going to go ahead and start with Mr. Tompkins, if you don't mind.
Alrighty. So, a few questions. With the, so if there's the green mitigation aspects, if they're already in, in the code, a lot of them anyway, then it's sort of like a giveaway, right? So, just my concern is that, you know, a 90 percent footprint with a 10 percent green space, when the rest of the development's 80 percent or 75 percent, is, I understand the intention to have the density in that specific area of town, then that imposes a certain quality of life on those residents. And I, I really wish we could go, for example, have more green space and go higher. You know, I wish we could go higher and have more green space. It would be healthier living and a better quality of life. And then, the other question goes to, is the dwelling unit size of the minimum 500 square feet, so is that all of the units, or is that a percentage of the units? Cause then it just sounds like 500 square foot units in a concrete jungle with no green space. And then, how can it be green if it's only 10 percent green space? And then, there's this one little caveat where it says additional trees in areas identified as deficient within the North Miami Street Management Plan, but then North Miami's planting Medjool date palms. So, then the question is, can it say additional native trees in areas identified as deficient? Since we have a real problem with planting any native trees in this city, it would be nice to see that the language is followed through without any room to, to not plant native trees. Cause what I'm reading here says I could plant pink tababulyas and date palms and that would be fine. And then we'd end up with no native trees. So, I think that covers all of it. I wish it could be taller and less footprint.
And that's already governed by our comprehensive plan amendment that was passed in, back in 2018. So, we can't change that.
Yeah, bear in mind that, that the height limit was, was already set at 200 feet, including the parking garage, unfortunately. And that, that, that would take a, a change in the comp plan.
That's certainly something that you should continue to promote because if that's your belief, then the council, the ladies and gentlemen who sit at the council, they're the ones who will hear your recommendations because when we get their staff report, when we do their staff report, all of your recommendations are actually incorporated into the staff report.
With regards to what Mr. Tompkins brought up, regarding the native foliage, we would not necessarily want to plant. And there might be a better alternative, as he, as he mentioned. Or, does that need to be put into a text form in some way to express the desire to be able to be flexible to address what he brought up regarding one particular native tree?
Well, what, what does, if you all vote and agree with Mr. Tonkin's recommendation tonight, under C, it would say additional native trees, is that, that would be your recommendation to City Council?
Are you fine with that wording?
Yeah, I mean, that just closes, it's just, it just reads like you can plant any tree that's under what North Miami says, but that includes a bunch of stuff that we should stop planting.
Right, no, because what was just recently passed was that they, it has to be, and that the attorney from Greenberg Torg brought up, it simply, it, it, it now states 100 percent native, Florida native, which creates an issue for the developer. And that's what he was asking, asking if we could be a little bit more flexible with that. Obviously, you disagree with the attorney. I'm kind of on the fence on this because I agree with Howard, I would like to see higher and more green. However, I don't want to get in a position to where we are making it so hard for developers to come into our city. And last meeting, I stated on parking issues how we weren't really running things smart. This is smart. I have to commend the city for this, I have to commend. I have to commend Debbie for this. And, um, I, um, I know this property. Um, I think that there's a lot of potential over here. I don't think it is going to be an inhibiting life in, in one major over here. But, um, I think to your point also about the five hundred square feet, that has through history of North Miami gone around and around and around, the sizing of units.
I'm not against the five hundred, just that I think a more, for example, if it's a five hundred square foot unit, then you can't have, what, more than one or two people living there, right? So then it's no families in those units.
Right.
So then if it was multiple.
Well, we have a lot of units in Miami that are coming on, or hopefully, that are larger units.
And, and as the, the esteemed, your esteemed council pointed out, it's the minimum.
It's the minimum.
It's the minimum, it's not the maximum size. So, a, um, a property owner there who wants to redevelop, they have the option to design based upon market. So we would, this would also encourage, and I'm on a mixed income project, so you get people like me that can't afford a, you know, a huge seventeen hundred square foot house.
So it would be both.
So it would be, it, potentially, it could be, it could be much bigger than that. There's no maximum, this is just the minimum size.
It's so that they don't build a whole bunch of two hundred square foot units.
Yeah, Michael.
Micro units.
What were you gonna say?
Micro units.
I would just comment that developers will always usually build to the smallest because of the, because of the construction cost, particularly today. But you make a good point that it does give you some latitude.
Because even those units that you all recently did conditional uses on, most of them are larger units, um, and even larger than they had to be because you, they were maxed out at, say, twenty percent. They actually did less than that. They actually had much larger units going all the way. I think their largest unit though, was a little over nine hundred square feet.
It does create some options.
It does create some options.
But again, we're talking about an area that most people don't even know. We're talking about, most people don't really go over here into the M one area. I mean, you probably, you would know where it is, Howard, but.
Yeah, it's peripheral to the city and it's not really culturally.
When you put two thousand residential units over there, there'll be a few people.
Or have some TVers.
And no canopy.
But, but look, it's a.
But we don't have any plans submitted for this, so.
No, all we're doing is, yes. The chair recognizes Mr. Hell.
So I want to clarify on the native question.
I need that answer.
So, we're talking at eleven C, right, additional trees? So, A already says a hundred percent Florida native.
Right, but that's on the site.
On the site, and what does C refer to?
Is off-site. No, it's off-site. They have to, they have to pay into a fund to buy trees to plant elsewhere. We have a tree management plan, and our tree management plan doesn't allow those date palms.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't, I'm sorry, Mr. Pashon. And our street tree management plan, there's a, a list of approved trees that we use, and that's what that is for. It's either paying into a fund or saying, oh, look, we have a, you know, fifty trees that we want to donate to the city to be planted according to our tree management, our street tree management master plan.
And how are trees selected in that plan? Are they native or is it mix?
Well.
So it's problematic because, for example, the pink tababulya is an antiquated choice, and it's actually an invasive species that the Native Plant Society will tell you is on the top five worst trees to plant in Florida. So we should revisit that tree plan, and that's why I'm saying if we're only gonna have a ten percent green space, at least plant native trees.
Is that plan adopted by ordinance or?
In other words, the, the burden would be on, on that, that group to make sure that it is not an invasive, invasive species that's gonna do harm to the city.
Which we're still planting here.
The recommendation that Mr. Tompkins had, staff fully supports that because it really does clarify that there are a list of Florida native trees that are allowed, and that's not one of them. And so, staff certainly supports that recommendation. I do just.
Okay, do we need to make that a part of a, a motion to?
Or, or a separate motion to have staff review the plan and bring it back?
No, I need to get this passed on.
We need this tonight, though, I believe.
I'm saying.
Just to give them an update?
You should act to, to recommend this ordinance, but then act separately on the North Miami Street Tree Management Plan, then ask staff to review it and see what can be done to update it.
Oh, okay.
All right, we have a motion.
Got it. Two different motions.
There's two different motions, okay.
Right, but you want to go through all, let's go through all of the members' first and collect comments.
Let's go ahead and deal with Mr. Tompkins' motion. We have a motion on the floor that, Mr., if you can repeat.
We have a motion on the floor to change the language to native trees as opposed to trees.
Just trees.
Okay, so.
So it would be, in C, it would say additional native trees.
So we have a motion there, do I have a second on that?
I have a second.
I have a second, all those favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everyone? Okay, it's unanimous on that motion?
Do you want to finish your conversation so we get other comments?
Uh, yeah. Where, where is the bonus density chart? How do you get bonus units?
Now, with the chart that we have that's existing is through the chart. So you do X in exchange for Y number of units. And the vast majority of those that are currently there is out of date and really not what we really want it to be.
We, we've been circling around that argument for almost a year. And the reason we didn't deal with this the last time was, got nothing to do with the fact that they were out of date. We all are violent agreement. But we're, we need, we need to provide bonuses to encourage people to do what it is that the city would like them to do.
Correct.
And somehow, we just can't seem to get them in here.
Well, um, your recommendation, if you choose to, would be to make the recommendation, as we talked last time, that you would all would recommend that they, we maintain the bonus chart maybe based upon the one I submitted.
A bonus chart.
A master one. Because right now, you've got a bunch of little ones throughout. But they can't, it's not gonna change how many density bonuses you can get in that district. It's simply now says you're gonna refer to a master chart that gives, it's all resiliency, it's all sustainability.
So back to my question, if you don't have that, how do you get bonus units?
The same way that you get bonus units if you're in the PCD outside of the NRO, like on Seventh Avenue or along Biscayne or in, along West Dixie outside of the NRO. You request them through the conditional use process. Staff actually sits down with each of the developers as they come in, and we look at what the code actually requires. And because they are asking for density bonuses, it's not an exaction. So we can get them, we get more urban space, we get more trees, we get more, whatever it is depending upon each site. And so it allows a great deal of flexibility for us as staff to work with a property owner to get good quality development in exchange for the bonus units. And in this case, the replacement of the chart would be, we've expanded the sustainability section, as, as you can see in there. We're adding some additional connectivity section to the design standard section.
I got it. I mean, really, I mean, I agree, we got it. The problem wasn't with the, the problem was with the bonus chart every place. It wasn't, the PCD has the same issues that we have here, that the bonuses were layups.
But they don't ha, they're not subject to those bonus density charts. If you're outside of the NRO, you're, you're not subject to those bonus density charts that, unless you're specifically in a PD. Because there are no bonus charts that allow, there are very few bonus charts. You can see where I've deleted them in there. And most of them were related to doing affordable housing or transit development overlay. And they were very, they're still limited to, for example, in the PD, they're still limited to a maximum bonus density units of fifteen. But what they could do was they could get something, they got points for doing something they needed to do already.
So I want to apply for bonus units.
Yes, you go through the conditional use process.
Where do I, where, where do I get the number that I can apply for? What do I have to do to obtain the units?
From my understanding now, from my discussion with Debbie, is that they did away with having the chart and making it discretionary on the part of staff to give them bonus points based on what they are going to give the city. So then it's in the hands of the staff to determine the amount of bonus points, but not a chart. Is that correct?
That is essentially correct, sir. And it's the same, as I said to you, outside of the PCD, outside of the NRO, we do the same thing there. And with that in mind, they still have to come before you with the same process. That process is not going to change. It als, what it also does is it allows you more flexibility as a commission. It allows our council more flexibility. Because as it is now, if they do everything it says in those charts, our city attorney has, has often said they've met those standards that are in our code. So you then start asking them for over and above. Now you're getting into the exaction because it's locked into your, your LDRs. And I'm going to defer to your counsel if he would like to make any corrections or amendments to what I just said.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
So you're hearing it from the city planner and the, your city attorney is al, I mean, your commission attorney is also saying that, and our city attorney, our deputy city attorney, madam?
No, I'm, I'm not issuing an opinion on this. This is, I have not been part of a prior discussion on it, so I'm just not, not contributing.
Madam?
I'm in support of the change.
So Debbie, maybe I'm thick. So do we change the dwelling units per acre and then everybody has to do these things?
We're not chang, you can't, you can't change the, the.
Exactly.
Units that they can apply for. So they can get up to, in the PD, they can get up to additional fifteen dwelling units per acre. How then it is distributed through the development, it also, as I said, it allows staff a lot of flexibility to work with the property owner. And it allows you then, when it comes before you, that you also have flexibility to say, well, can you add X, Y, Z? Because again, now you're not into exactions because you're not locked into a chart.
So that, that becomes an effect, we have, we now have more discretion in determining what that developer must do or can do.
I guess the realm I've got is discretion goes both ways. Discretion can be incredibly lenient. And what we've got now, we believe, has been too lenient. We've given people additional units for doing little or nothing.
Which is one of the reasons why you'll see some of the, whoops, sorry. Which is one of the reasons why you see some of the developments coming before you that had, for example, the very large pedestrian promenade. You know, they were only required to do something on their property to actually get those points. But because staff actually sat down and said, oh, okay, let's expand that out, let's put in more public art, let's put in more seating, they were, they did more than they, than the actual bonus unit required for them, that they applied for to do.
I, I, I get it, I disagree with it. I think it's, you, you, you compensate people for doing things you want them, you want them to do. And the city should, should reward people with units in their development for things that we want them to do.
That's correct.
And that's why the, that's why the scale existed.
But I think all we're doing is not showing them in advance an exact number rather than kind of like the carrot and, the carrot and the stick. You know, tell us what, maybe I'm wrong in this, but we want them to tell us what they can do.
Do we have some situations in developments where they has been, there has been by the developer application for additional bonus units that they didn't? I mean, I guess, like, can we get an example of some bonus units that have been given to a developer? That, or around?
Under the, under the set of, uh.
Because it seems as though.
I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't follow that question.
Okay, so, what we're talking about is the developers and giving the bonus units, right? Okay. So I'm just wondering if this is actually a big issue or if we're just talking about something that we hope could be an issue? Do you see what I mean? Okay, so I guess, so that's why I'm, what type of bonus units have been approved that? Do you understand what, what I'm saying?
No, I do, I.
Like, like where is the real problem? Is this a made up problem or is this?
No, the problem, the problem that's existed for whatever period of time it is, is people came in and applied for bonus units to build their little project, and we told them they could get this many if they had a bus stop a quarter, within a quarter of a mile. And if you had a bike rack in the building, we gave them units. And all that was ridiculous.
Right.
I mean, so it was just a walk in the park and everybody came in and said, bike racks, bus stops down there. So I get all these units. So the idea was to turn those into real life things that we wanted them to do.
Well, my, my take on it then, from what my discussion.
Just to, just to follow up to, to Mr. Goodwin's question, you know, as to what the problem was and, and why we're looking to fix the issue. And you hit the nail on the head. We codified and laid our hands out on the table and said, this is how many bonus units you get for doing these specific things. And when a developer purchases a property, looking at these bonus charts and pretty much gambles on a development and says, I'm gonna do all these things and this, to get these units, the city's hands are tied once that development plan comes in and they said they were gonna do all these things. It's kind of hard for staff to evaluate it and say, no, we don't like your bike rack. We're not gonna give you the, the bonus units for that bike rack. I think that's where she's getting at. By not having our cards laid out on the table, it gives staff and developers a little bit more creativity in, in the, the style of the development that we're seeing, and a little bit flexibility as to how many units that we're gonna actually give for certain items versus having a chart where developer is, our, our, you know, cards already laid out and so they, we've kind of already told them what we want to see. So it's just a different approach. Um, and I don't know if that answers your question?
Yeah, it, it did.
Mr. Pashon?
It's a different approach. Last, well, just as, and I don't know what this means because when we've got the strike throughs and the underlinings and sometimes it's a little hard to follow the trail here to see what we're trying to do.
Okay, sir.
But on.
We just have to do it by law.
On page six. Which is.
Section four dash two oh five, are you looking at B or A?
Well, the new B.
The new B, okay.
Which, which used to start within the NRO and now says multifamily residential zoning units outside the NRO. So it says for parceled lands in multifamily residential zoning districts outside of the NRO, a density bonus may be granted up to twenty-five dwelling units per acre. So what about R four?
Multi, that's multifamily.
Multifamily is R four.
R four, R five, and R six.
So R four, which is twelve dwelling units per acre, can now apply for a bonus of, of up to twenty-five?
That's, yep, that's always been there. All, all we did was change the title because you can see that the former B actually was within the NRO. And so it was a, there was a typo there in that when it should have been multifamily residential zoning districts outside of the NRO for those numbers. Because within the NRO, you can go up to ninety or a hundred depending upon if you're on a major corridor inside the NRO. So this is, this chart, the new B up here, is outside of the NRO multifamily districts.
Where it used to be within the NRO multifamily districts.
But it was a typo, it didn't belong there. That was a, another correction, another typo that I, we caught when we were looking at this. That was a, another correction, another typo that I, we caught when we were looking at this because you have within the NRO everything, so it's not broken out multifamily or, or a particular zoning district. If you're in the NRO, ninety dwelling units per acre, hundred if you're on a major corridor regardless of your zoning. If you're R two, R four, commercial, PU.
R two's single family residence.
Yes, sir, it did, it always had the ability in single family if you were in the NRO.
So if I'm in R three, R, R four outside of the NRO, and I wanna double the number of dwelling units in my, in my building, what do I have to do?
You'd have to apply for a conditional use permit, go through the public here, you'd have to come in with a design, a pre-application process. You then make an appointment, we talk about what your project's going to look like potentially, what you're proposing. Then they go back, get a final, based upon our conversation, we tell them what we're looking for, what we want to see. Then they come before you all with the concept plan, so the way that you had been doing it before has not changed. That will not, that process of approval will not change. It's how they get to you is what changes. But the approval process does not.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, do you have any further questions on this?
No.
Okay. Now, we do have one more motion, I believe, that we need to take care of or to add before we take the final motion or-
Gary, what was that?
We, we had the change that we-
Well, you, you added native to that eleven C and the question was, did you want staff to review the plan and come back and report on how to update it?
I believe the motion was we were gonna approve this.
Okay, there's two separate things going on.
No.
Okay, yes, you can certainly take action to approve the ordinance. And you already took action to add the word native in that eleven C.
All right, so we, so we can go ahead and call-
So if that's all you wanna do, that's fine.
We can go ahead and call the question then, without any further discussion.
It's recommending approval of the ordinance.
Right, recommending, so I'm going to go ahead, um-
As amended.
As amended with.
Right, as amended. So I, um, the motion's on the floor, um, that we approve with the-
Mike made the motion.
Mike did, okay, and-
I'll second it.
Mr. Goodwin has seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Go along, you get a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Pashon. So the motion carries five, five zero. Thank you very much, staff.
Thank you.
Debbie did a great job, I know it's like-
That's just a lot of work.
A lot of work and I appreciate the time that you, it takes-
To take approval of the ordinance.
To explain that to each one of us.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we can go ahead and move along to the next item.
Yes.
It'll be PC twelve dash nineteen. This is an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, providing for a text amendment to chapter twenty-nine of the city of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by Amending Article Three Development Review Specifically at Section Three Dash Six Oh Four and Article Five Development Standards Specifically at Section Five One Four Zero Five, Dash One Four Zero Five to revise the noticing standards for administrative variances and require special exception approval for the parking and/or storage of recreational vehicles, boat trailers and personal watercraft, providing for repeal, conflicts, reveribility, direction of scrivener's errors and for an effective date. If we have staff report, please.
Yes, once again, for the record, Debbie Love, City Planner, Community Planning and Development. The item before you amends how the, the approval process for parking and storage of certain types of vehicles. This has nothing to do with the commercial vehicles at all, there's only, you can only park, currently it's the RVs, watercraft, you know, your jet skis, things like that, so. It's actually going to amend two articles, Article Three, which is under your noticing, and then Article Five, which is the parking section of the code that allows these types of vehicles and vessels to be parked on your property. It does change it from, and we had a community workshop, and as you're, as I indicate in the staff report, we did a survey of those attending, there were seventeen people in attendance to, and we had two council members attend. And we asked the participants to answer certain questions based upon what we thought was the issues that they wanted. So we wanted to get their take on what they thought of the, of the approval process. So you can see the results on page two of, of the staff report under background, you can see the results of the voting. It was immediate voting, I don't know who on the board here, if any, I know Mr. Pashon was there.
Yeah, we both were there.
Were you, you were there too, Mr. Goodwin? And it was immediate, everyone could see the voting as it, as it was coming through. We wanna do more of those, we really like those. But then at the end, there were also some comments and some discussion afterwards. So with that in mind, the ordinance that you have before you is reflective of the changes based upon the community input. So it also not only changes the process from administrative variance, it changes it to special exception, which is a public hearing that goes before the Board of Adjustment. Board of Adjustment meets once or twice a month, once a month. So the turnaround, it will take a little bit to get through the process for someone, it would be a public hearing. The noticing requirements, so that, then they're under the noticing requirements of a public hearing. Under the current variance process, you get, the noticing goes to the abutting property owners, which are the people on either side, across the street and behind you. So that's the circle of life, that's the circle of those who get notified. And that process is changing to become a special exception, which is in a five hundred foot radius. So they would then move through that special exception process. They also asked, we also had a discussion and recommended, recommendation of expanding the noticing requirements for all administrative variances to that five hundred foot. And we've crafted it whereby when we get a complete application and we deem the application to be complete, that's when the notices would go out to the surrounding property owners, not after we've made a decision. So then it allows for that period of time for folks to say, mm, no, I have a problem with this. So the letters, the noticing will go out to five hundred feet around an individual site. If it is approved tonight, this will be another one that's on the twenty-seven agenda for first reading on September tenth, for the second reading, and again, it becomes effective in ten days after that. That is the end of staff's report, thank you.
Okay.
Just one quick question about the notices, the posting also, that, the signage on the property.
That's correct, sir, because when you do the, when you change the noticing requirements, although it's not a, the newspaper ad or a regular newspaper, um, sorry. Thank you. When they have to go, when you change the noticing, they wanted signage. So depending upon, if you're a corner lot, we actually have properties that have three frontages, so they'd have to get three signs. So they have to have a sign for each frontage, so thank you for reminding me of that, Mr. Goodwin.
And that's a hundred and thirty-four dollars per sign.
Right.
So you can see it would add to that cost. Right, before we have a discussion, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please step forward, public hearing is now open. Seeing none. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, public hearing is now closed. My gavel, by the way, is my sunglasses because we lost the-
We gotta find that gavel.
We lost this. Okay, open for commission discussion? Anyone wanting to comment on this?
I think Bob and I were the only ones at this, this meeting. And I had to commend staff on the, that meeting itself and how the survey was conducted and the fact that it was real time and we all used our phones. And it was quite ingenious actually because you thought that people in the room might all be voting one way, but actually when they voted, it was a little, little different, so I, it was nice to see that. And it's nice to see it reflected here, so.
Michael, you look like you have something to note?
No.
Mr. Tompkins? Any comment?
I, I have a few things.
Go ahead, please.
Don't wanna rock the boat first night off.
No, that's all right.
I don't like the line that says renters should not be allowed to apply for a variance, it just seems-
Okay.
I don't know, it just seems like everybody's equal.
That's not actually in the ordinance.
Okay, and then the idea that, right, so then someone would have to get, there's a five hundred foot radius that's gotta get households to approve, so I mean, that's like the surrounding twenty houses.
No, sir, it, it's not an approval, it's a notification of the process.
It's a, okay, so that's a lot of house, so I'm, I'm just, I'm reading this stuff and, and I go back to thinking about a low income mother who is fixing up her little van thing for her kids because she can't afford to go on vacation. And then there's this two thousand dollar fee to go through this process that seems a little redundant because the parking requirement's already being defined here, so it would just seem like it's very arduous for a resident to, you know, two hundred and ninety-three dollars is one thing, but you know, if you can't afford to go on vacation and you're trying to do something nice for the kids and then you get hit with a two thousand dollar fee, that's a lot. And then at the last council meeting, they said that the, that the Board of Adjustment might be, come an advisory board anyway, so that kinda comes out like if you wanna store a boat at your house, you gotta go before city council. And then, so there's that, so it just seems clunky in the process. And then if you look up the definition of boat in the dictionary, it's any vessel that's rowed with oars or- so does that mean I need a variance or something for my kayak because it's a boat?
No, sir, that's a, um, a boat is actually defined in Florida statute under vessel and so, and it's, our, our definition follows Florida statute.
Okay.
And they don't consider kayaks and canoes to be, fall under-
I was just going off the dictionary, so.
Right, right.
Okay, so I was just wondering if it could not be something where applicants could go through the city rather than the Board of Adjustment and all of that? If the, if the regulations are already there and they're not, and they're staying within them, then why would they have to go through the whole process and use all the city's resources to go through that process and perhaps end up before city council in a period that might take months just to get a boat? It just seems like a lot of process.
And what you're doing is you're modifying the existing process whereby staff approves them administratively. We visit the site, we make sure that, you know, whatever is necessary by code is in place. And this is changing that process to follow the Board of Adjustment, to go toward the Board of Adjustment. And then ultimately, that's since our advisory, they would have a public hearing process before city council, which, once that becomes, it's not effective at this point now, so this cost doesn't reflect that. There would be an additional advertising cost because you have to advertise, you could either advertise the Board of Adjustment and the city council meeting at the same time, if we could, and sometimes we do that to save somebody money, but sometimes that doesn't work out very well because they can't get scheduled for, something happens and then-
So it couldn't just be an administrative variance?
It was an administrative, it's, it's currently an administrative variance and this is changing it to Board of Adjustment as a special exception.
It just seems like if, you know, if, if you're like a low income mom trying to fix up a little van thing to take the kids on vacation and you bought the van thing for five hundred dollars and then you got hit with like this two thousand dollar thing, it would just make it prohibitively expensive.
Well, the current administrative, the current administrative variance process doesn't work. There are six things you can get an administrative variance for. Four of them are slight intrusions into the setback for either a driveway or a, a, a carport or your dock or a driveway extension. And it's, it's less than whatever it is, ten percent or something. So it's just, it's just a minor intrusion, if the neighbors sign off on it, that's fine. The fifth thing is, it's in a commercial parking lot, a new restaurant comes in and that's an administrative variance. And then this, this problem is the outlier. This is a parking issue. So we, you're getting an administrative variance for parking it where you shouldn't be parking. And, and like I've said, if I go into Miami Beach and park where I'm not supposed to be parked, I'm towed or ticketed or both.
Right.
And so the application for administrative variances for these vehicles and vessels hasn't worked. It, it, our process doesn't work. People are given weeks to move their car and not minutes or hours as Miami Beach or anyplace else would do. So the administrative variance didn't work, going to the Board of Adjustment doesn't work because to get a variance, you're gonna have to require a hardship. And it's very difficult to establish the hardship for wanting to park your boat in front of your house. So that's probably not gonna work, so the special exception process was the last vestige. Or just say no. I mean, it's one or the other, but, but-
So it's basically-
My problem with the, I mean, and I'm not, I think you guys did a wonderful job. I generally disagree with, we, we sample a couple of dozen people and we get their opinions. I get more people than that that call me when the problems get bad, on a weekly basis. And it gets bad around holidays, I'm expecting, we'll have some, a flurry of them this weekend because the, the code enforcement can't cite these people. They go out and give them, they issue a warning and go, we're gonna come back in two weeks and see if you've corrected it. And in two weeks, the problem has gone away for a day. And then after code, after that time has passed, the problem comes back again. And when code enforcement goes back, this person is not a repeat offender because he's never appeared before magistrate. So they keep playing whack-a-mole with this and this has been going on for a long, long time. So the councilman Galvin, councilwoman Keys, I think councilman Deslumay have been getting a lot of phone calls on this. Because this isn't a problem particular to one part of town. I mean, we've got people all over town that are screaming the same problem, just different iterations of it. But you, you know, you drive home, you, you, you drive down a hundred and thirty-fifth street and there's three forty-five plus foot recreational vehicles parked in front of somebody's house.
Right, and then one other question I had with regard to that is, what are the rules then if there's a hurricane and you've got boats blowing around everywhere? Are there rules to have them tied down or how does that work?
There's no, there's no, there's been no consideration of hurricane, I mean, I think, I don't think anybody's gonna go worry about parking when there's an evacuation going on. I mean, just for a practical matter. So, I mean, this, this is solving the, we have a problem. We've got a problem all part, north, south, east and west in the city. And the, you, you kinda go through the options for solutions and this became the, the last best option.
Well, follow up on that, I mean, we're not restricting them, we're basically just giving them a tool to, to appeal it and, and to go through the process of allowing it.
Right, this gives them the process to allow it.
At least it gives them, you know, we're not saying you can't do it, go ahead and apply and I guess my next question would be, what if the city just rejects all this every time somebody applies it? Or we, you know, would it be better just to say, make it across the board, no parking of, of vehicles, said vehicles? Rather than go through saying, you know, I mean, this is something that could come back and-
Well, that's totally up to you all, that's up to you all.
That'll never fly.
No, I know.
Well, right, right now, you can't park a recreational vehicle in front of your house.
Correct.
Without approval.
Overnight parking of a rec- recreational vehicles can only be there if you're actually loading and unloading it.
Right.
Again, I'm gonna go back to what I said at the last meeting about the, the city not getting the financing that it should for these types of issues. If you go and you ticket and you give someone, or you tow, if these things are, start getting towed, people that are parking illegally, just in, in general, then that's gonna stop. So I think, again, if we were doing that, if, if people knew that, that's gonna kind of- So I think, again, if we were doing that, if, if people knew that, that's going to kind of, that they're going to get towed, they're going to get ticketed and that it's actually going to be enforced, that's going to be a lot, that's going to eliminate the problem a lot.
Well, we haven't, we're not a city that does this right now. Mr. Held, you're some experience with the city of Miami Beach. What, they, they pretty much tow at, at will over there, correct?
I don't know that they're towing RVs or boats. They're, they're towing, you know, cars that are parked illegally in the public right-of-way or in private lots. I would have to research what they're doing with regard to RVs and boats, but I assume that they're generally not permitted, definitely not in the front. And I would be surprised if they're permitted on the sides of a house.
Which kind of led to me to bring up the subject of, you know, are, are we just creating something that will be perpetual of, of appeals and expenditure of money and time for staff? Or do we want to look at it and just say, let's, let's make it, have, have staff look at it as perhaps not allowing it, period? So...
Well, I, I, I'm fine, but I think, I think what you've got is some people, I mean, if you could put, they, they currently, the administrative variances, you can put it basically out of sight.
Right.
You know, put it behind your house, put it on the side of your house, and that's what that screen that Debbie put up was. There's some kind of shielding where it's, you don't see it.
Which this ordinance also, it is written into this ordinance also. Correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong.
And that, nobody, nobody objects to that.
Mr. Chair, the city attorney.
I just wanted to make a comment, as far as your request to carte blanche, ban all recreational vehicles from being parked on private property. I think you would, or the city would experience more of a challenge or an appeal to that because what you're doing then is you're kind of affecting people's personal property rights and saying what they can and can't do with their private property. What staff's tried to do here is beef up the requirements for allowing a recreational vehicle to be parked on property. It's probably the strictest it's ever been with what we're proposing. And it does put them potentially in, to have two public hearings on the issue. So the surrounding property owners, you know, i- if BOA does in fact become advisory, will have an opportunity to come to two public hearings and voice their opinion as to recreational vehicles in their immediate area. So that, that's, that, that's really staff's best proposal to try to make it as strict as possible and to get as much input from the community as well as the boards and the mayor and council for it.
Right.
That's a great summation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That does help, all of a sudden, kind of help you a little bit.
The concern relative to cost, the largest chunk is the required advertisement in the newspaper for a public hearing. That's not negotiable at all because that's what they charge us, we don't mark it up in any way.
It just seems it would exclude lower-income residents from having that vacation or enjoying that boat that they, you know, have been working on fixing up. It's a lot of money, two thousand dollars for a regular family.
We've, we've already heard that already, that's some of the things, the comments we are getting now.
But now, my understanding is also that anyone that has an administrative variance right now, they're grandfathered in. So this would be new residents that are coming into the city and buys and, and all of a sudden they show up with a boat, they're going to have to go through the process of being a variance.
Or if, or anyone who has a boat now that gets cited, they have to go through, currently, they have to go through the special exception process before BOA. And we are already hearing the concern about the cost. But unfortunately, as I said, the largest chunk is the advertisement costs with Miami Herald. And we can't...
And, and I guess we have no grace period involved in this, once this ordinance goes into effect, correct? Where somebody who's already been parking a boat and then gets cited.
No, currently, the mayor and council imposed a moratorium on the granting of administrative variances for these type of variances, so...
Unaware of that, thank you.
They don't even have the opportunity to run in quickly and try to get their administrative variance before. Correct.
Yes.
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve PC twelve nineteen.
Yeah, you're Mike. Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve PC twelve nineteen.
Hearing no further discussion, I, I'll take second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Goodwin, second some motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ordinance passes unanimously. And is there anything that is going to come back? We'll get a report on this on what the city council, what their decision is on this, also, and if there's any changes. This goes to the city council.
I'll give it in my leg, when I give you guys the legislative updates, if you guys read those, it'll be in there.
We appreciate those legislative updates that you give us. And for anyone new on the panel...
Explain that to Mr. Tonkin of what we're talking about, Jennifer, please.
So traditionally, with each planning commission agenda packet, I will include in there a legislative update letting you, and informing you guys of all decisions that the mayor and council have made since the last meeting so that you guys can keep abreast of all of those decisions and ordinances that pass you. You can kind of track them legislatively and see where they ended up with mayor and council, whether there's any modifications, whether it passed or whether it failed.
During the meeting, I had overlooked reading an, an objection to the, to the item that we just discussed. Counselor, can I have the...
You can, you can go ahead and just read it.
All right.
Actually, I'm not sure that the lady understood what she was writing because it's the opposite of what was being proposed. So go ahead and read it.
But there was a, there was a citizen's communications made to the planning commission through a note and it came from Louisa M. Alicia at ten thirty northeast one hundred and forty-second street, North Miami, Florida, three, three, one, zero, I can't read the last part of the zip code, I apologize. Anyway, Mrs. Alicia recommended that we denial the changing of the BOA, the Board of Adjustment variance from administrative to, to the special exception. So that was what she had voiced in a handwritten communique that was given to me before meeting. Now, I apologize for not reading it into the record during the public hearing session. But there was one citizen who, if she was able to attend tonight, would have voiced her objection to the variance that we passed.
So I withdraw my comment because it sounds like she either corrected it or somebody explained it to her.
All right.
Because we did, we have received a lot of comments on the requirement now because they have to go before special exception. And it reflects exactly what Mr. Tonkin's concern was, the cost. And I just wanted to assure you all that the, the biggest chunk of that was the advertising for the public hearing.
Can I ask a, just a question that maybe you guys can answer? The, the white, the old White House Inn property, it's been sitting there empty for a while, obviously, but apparently they're pulling permits to, to, to like resurface the pool. And, I mean, what can they do with that property? I mean, it's lost its, it's lost its, its non-conforming use status, right?
If you, you, if it's a non-conforming use that was there, if it doesn't, they don't do something or acknowledge it within a hundred and eighty days if it stays dormant and nothing...
Which is long gone.
Which no applications are in place, then they lose their grandfathered status of a non-conforming. So they have to come back within, you have to do something within that hundred and eighty days. So I'm not aware because I don't see them, but Marlene will make a note to follow up with the zoning manager and provide you all with, if you're interested, if all of you are interested, or if it's just Commissioner Pichon.
And they're, I mean, the, the fact that they, you're using it as a parking lot for cars is okay?
No. I, I, in that case, that is...
Well, I think, I think I would be interested in it as well.
Okay, sir. Make sure, is anyone, does anyone else besides Mr. Pichon and Mr. McDermott would like an update on that?
Definitely, we would all, I think.
Pretty much all of you?
Yeah.
That would be nice, if you could, yes, please. By the way, we'll, we'll list that under committee reports, if that's okay with you.
That's fine, sir.
Do we have any old business that we need to discuss, staff?
I have new business.
Okay, new business, go ahead, Mr. McDermott.
Okay, as we're beginning to, Mr. Chairman, as we're beginning this new board cycle, I guess, as you would say, I just think that with Marlene Monastine and our, our counsel, Gary, okay, and Debbie and Jennifer, that we're very, very fortunate to have a very talented and resourceful staff to work with. We really appreciate, you know, the, you know, very, very, very smart, you know, very insightful and, you know, really try to do the right thing. And we're really fortunate that we have the four of you to work with.
And we thank you, sir, for that.
And I, I concur with that. And I have thanked you many times, Ms. Love, for giving me advice and helping me out before the meetings with questions. And it wasn't always like that and it's a, a welcome, welcome addition to making our jobs a lot easier up here.
You're welcome, sir.
Having said that...
That extends that to Mr. Tonkin, would you share that with your, your newest member, the offer that we have of standing off the week?
Yes, and that is, should you have any questions, Ms. Love is available before the meeting, to contact, to go over and review any of the items, to get a clear, a clearer understanding or bring up anything that you have questions on that she can answer in advance and help, help you formulate a lot of things before the meeting and which helped me realize that there were some things that I left out yesterday, of course. But it is an opportunity and, and I think we're fortunate that we have a city staff member who is available to do that.
It's our pleasure, sir.
Certainly.
The one thing that staff would like to remind you all, you do not, normally, traditionally, you have not had a meeting in August. You're on hiatus, so the next meeting traditionally would be your September meeting. And we want to verify that you all want to not have a meeting in August.
Is there anything...
Is there anything, yeah, it's a question, anything confirming that's going to...
Is there, is there anything that, that you feel that we need to...
No, we're working on something that's going to come before you in September. Yes, ma'am. Right, that's a great point. Marlene, just to raise the reminder that the, the third of September is your meeting. That's the day after Labor Day weekend. So if you all would like to maintain that schedule, or are you looking at a different schedule? So we wanted to cover that with you while we have you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I have no problem with September third at the moment, anyone else?
I actually would, if we could change that date, it's my anniversary, but if we could change it, I would be up for...
I wouldn't wait.
Bring everybody in. And if, we will have a, we have a hold of it next year.
Certainly.
It's fine with me, whatever you want to change it to.
Sure, so, so do you, so I need to, I need to know from you all, as a group, do you wish to change it or do you...
It would be to September tenth, correct?
Or leave it September third? Leave it September third?
You couldn't do that week, that's council meeting.
Yeah, council, council meeting is the tenth.
You can't do council meeting because that's, that's council meeting.
Yeah, I think we're going to run into trouble later on in the month.
So it would be the third Tuesday.
Third, yeah, that would end up being the third Tuesday and that's going to be problematic.
So you're then bumping up against the next one that we normally have. So it's up to you, we, we try to work as best we can to get a, a different date. If you, as a group, wish to otherwise, Mr. Goodwin, then we would just say happy anniversary.
Is there a conflict the following day?
It's, it's up to you, sir, we could try.
Special meeting on the fourth.
We have budget meetings? Oh, yeah, they're setting up budget meetings right now. So you're going to run into budget meetings.
We're pretty much locked into the third.
Yeah, because that whole week is like all this budget stuff.
Budget meetings and the like, I mean, we, we'll bring you a cake, okay?
Yeah, all right, the third it is, September, September third.
You'll still get a package, by the way. You'll still get a package.
We can certainly give you an excuse absence.
No, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. Now, also, there are some spots open in the council, as we mentioned earlier on, on the commission, that may or may not be filled by then, do we know?
July ninth, they're supposed to do appointments, finish up appointments for both the planning commission, Ginger, and Jennifer.
So appointments were really only made at the last council meeting to ensure that there would be quorum for tonight's meeting. So they're, they, once we said five was quorum, that's really all they, that was their goal, was to appoint the five. Once they had their five, they said they were going to leave it for the July ninth to make the remainder of those appointments as well as the Board of Adjustment and any other boards that need appointments.
Okay, great, thank you.
So next Tuesday.
All right. Hearing no other items, move to adjourn. Motion is on the floor to adjourn, second.
Second it.
Second it, all in favor, say aye. Good evening, gentlemen, thank you so much, ladies.
Fourth of July.
Thank you.
And enjoy your hiatus. We'll be hard at work getting ready for September for you.